Good evening and welcome to the November 28, 2023 City Council Meeting. This meeting is hereby called to order at 7:30 PM. Will you please join, rise, and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Boucher.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Kohler.
Present.
With seven present and none absent, there is a quorum. First order of business this evening is to approve minutes from our November 14, 2023 City Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Mikail for the first and Aldrin Bud Matts for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and those meeting minutes are approved. At this time, we have some visitors with us today. We are joined by Cook County Commissioner Maggie Trevor and Cook County Commissioner Scott Britton to the city of Rolling Meadows as we pledge to join Cook County to unite against hate. Before I begin the proclamation, we do have some remarks from Commissioner Britton, who will be invited to approach and provide an overview of the initiative tonight for the council and answer any questions the council might have regarding this countywide initiative. We will then have Commissioner Trevor also provide remarks following Commissioner Britton. Commissioner Britton, please approach.
Thank you, Mayor Sonoigre, members of the City Council, and also Ted Mason, Chief of Staff, for Commissioner Kevin Morrison, since we share you almost equally amongst the three of us. You know, it was March of 2022 that I went out to get my Sunday newspaper, as I often do, and there was a bag laying in my driveway. That's just a sandwich bag, and it was filled with rice, which I've now learned is there to keep it from blowing away. And inside that bag was the most horrid anti-Semitic, pardon my language, crap you can imagine. And I thought to myself, kind of a couple moments of thought, as I stood there. One, what in the heck is this stuff? And then, two, as a Catholic, I am freaked out by having a neo-Nazi in my driveway. I can only imagine what my friends and neighbors who are Jewish would have a reaction to this material being dropped off, which it was, in their driveways. There have been hundreds of these packets distributed throughout the north and northwest suburbs and now throughout the country, always with slightly different variations, but all the same horrid stuff. And so I decided at that moment that, you know, I do believe silence can be complicity, and I thought we needed to take a stand. And so we began Cook County United Against Hate. I can tell you now we're up to over 50 partners, including almost every community in my district, 24 municipalities, and many religious organizations, not-for-profits, and businesses who have taken the pledge, and I would urge you to go to the website, cookcountyunitedagainsthate.com. And the concept is a very simple one. That is that Cook County makes no home for hate. And that the message that we're trying to communicate is that there is strength in our diversity, but also we should treat each other with respect, with empathy, and with kindness. And I'll give you an example of how, since March of 2022, and I have to tell you that I think things are worse now than they were then, with everything that's going on in the world. And I was at an event recently in Northfield, and it was right after October 7th and the horrible terrorist attack in Israel. And a person came up to me and said, you know, my reaction is when people hate me, I want to hate them back. And that is a completely understandable human emotion. But I said to her what I say to you today, and these are the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., not mine, which is that darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. The message of Cook County United Against Hate and the resolution that I hope you will approve tonight is that we together can stand against the worst, the worst views of our common humanity. And especially at this time of year, I know it seems like a distant goal and it seems almost impossible, but my prayer remains for peace on earth, and together I still think we can get there. And I'm sure Commissioner Trevor would have a few comments, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cook County Commissioner Maggie Trevor for the 9th District, and I have also about a third of Rolling Meadows. I also live in Rolling Meadows, just down that way, or maybe it's that way. I was born and raised in this community, so I've seen Rolling Meadows change over the years and become one of the most diverse communities in the northwest suburbs. And I just wanted to say that I fully support what Scott Britton has been doing. I think it's, as diverse as Rolling Meadows is, I think that this is something that is necessary to take a stand on. I too have gotten some really horrific things attached to my doorknob over the years, in particular, some anti-LGBTQ stuff that was circulated around here early this year. So I'm very proud that Rolling Meadows is taking a stand and participating in the United Ahead Against Hate Initiative. And I just wanted to, again, thank you for supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner Trevor. Are there any questions from the council at this point regarding for the commissioners or the initiative? Yes, Aldrin Kohler.
Aside from the statements, what are we doing?
So I didn't want to go into my two-hour dissertation because I know you've got a lot of stuff going on. But if you go to the website, within there are multiple different things you can do. You can take the pledge, we can post the symbol of Cook County United Against Hate, which we have one, it's actually kind of cool. There are a number of different resources within the website where you can take a look at the things that we're doing within the county. We're doing it during Racial Equity Week, during multiple activities within the county. We're trying to use this as an educational opportunity. In addition to that, you know, we supervise both the Cook County State's Attorney and the Cook County Sheriff. And when appropriate, we're going to make sure that if these are hate crimes, we're going to charge them as hate crimes, which can take misdemeanor and turn it into a felony. Because the same people who are dropping off these packets at homes are the same ones who are drawing the swastikas on synagogues, the same people who are throwing rocks through LGBTQ organizations in the city. We need to know who these people are and when appropriate to prosecute.
So I am totally in favor of this. My theme in life is love always, because it's overpowering. But if there's anything that we can do here in the city, join with programs you have, give, have meetings, have programs within the city, let us know. Because I'd be very much interested in working with you on this.
So we've now had three. Showcase, we've had three activation events. We're trying to do them throughout my district. My plan is to present this to the National Association of Counties so that we can have, pretty much all the large urban counties can sign on. We might have a little problem with some other areas, but we're going to try. Because I think that there is a theme that I have figured out, that there are so many more of us than there are of them, but we need to make sure that the word gets out and that we work together. So there's going to be more activation events. And by the way, if I can do one in Rolling Meadows, I think it's time to do it. Maggie, go ahead.
Actually, Commissioner Britton sponsored one in Arlington Heights. Was it in May of this year? I attended it, and it was an event that drew together organizations from throughout the community. And it was a chance not only to learn about Cook County United Against Hate, but it was also an opportunity to learn about all the different parts that make up that community. And I would be happy to work with Commissioner Britton and Commissioner Morrison to organize one in Rolling Meadows if you would have us do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aldrin Kohler, and thank you commissioners for your responses as well. At this time, I'm going to read the resolution so that way we can present it to the commissioners, and the council will vote as item FF for our consent resolutions later on this evening. But we can do a straw vote for you as well, if you're comfortable before we begin. And for that, I'd like a straw vote from the council in favor of adopting the resolution. Thank you very much. So that way, as we continue with our budget discussions, there isn't much of a question as to where the council's landing at this point. So again, thank you for being here. So at this time, the resolution pledging to join Cook County, unite against hate, states the following. Whereas the city of Rolling Meadows seeks to continue to become more equitable, welcoming, and connected as part of the Cook County community; and whereas the city of Rolling Meadows is dedicated to protecting all residents from hate crimes and seeking an end to bigotry in all its forms; and whereas the city of Rolling Meadows supports efforts towards social justice; and whereas in 2020, anti-black hate crimes continue to be the largest bias incident victim category, with 2,871 incidents, a 49% increase since 2019; and whereas the Center for the Study of Hate and Extremism revealed that anti-Asian hate crime increased by 189% in the first quarter of 2021, compared to just one year before; and whereas FBI reported anti-Hispanic hate crimes rose 8.7% in 2020; and whereas there has been a 9% increase in the number of civil rights complaints from Muslims in the United States since 2020; and whereas LNA residents saw a 350% increase in anti-Semitic incidents between 2016 and 2020; and whereas the Human Rights Campaign reported that 2021 was the deadliest year on record for trans and gender nonconforming people; and whereas, according to the Department of Justice, persons with disabilities comprised 26% of victims of all non-fatal crimes between 2017 and 2019; and whereas the Cook County United Against Hate Campaign disrupts intolerance by providing a visual, verbal, and educational avenues to stand up against all forms of bigotry; and whereas Cook County United Against Hate is an empowering, loving, and community-spirited symbol to disrupt the symbols of discrimination that are too many to count; and whereas Cook County United Against Hate is an impactful pledge to welcome all people, regardless of their background or identity, and to support tolerance and justice; and whereas Cook County United Against Hate is a personal choice to become educated on the legacies of systemic bigotry and how to be actively anti-hate; and whereas the city of Rolling Meadows encourages residents to actively learn from those with lived different experiences and to question hateful acts whenever seen or heard, and to educate themselves on to safely interrupt hate; and whereas the city of Rolling Meadows encourages residents to post the Cook County United Against Hate beacon on homes, cars, storefronts, office doors, and online so all can recognize it and know that all are welcome, and hate has no home here; and whereas the city of Rolling Meadows encourages its residents to take the pledge to unite against prejudice and to support tolerance and justice, and now therefore be it resolved, the city of Rolling Meadows adopts the Cook County United Against Hate pledge, and be it further resolved, the city of Rolling Meadows does hereby commit to fighting injustice and intolerance, and hereby joins with its community to welcome all people, regardless of their race, religion, ethnicity, age, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, class, or other backgrounds. Signed, November 28, 2023. Will the commissioners and Chief of Staff Ted Mason also please come to the front to receive the proclamation? Thank you again. On behalf of the city of Rolling Meadows, we look forward to working with you. Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Appreciate it so much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The new Cook County flag out front.
Again, a huge thank you to Cook County for being here this evening. And at this time, we will move on to any ward reports this evening. Are there any ward reports? Okay. Seeing none, then this is normally where we would open the floor for 20 minutes. However, there are no signatories on the sign-in sheet, so we will move on to our pending ordinance. Just checking to see if this is on. Yep, okay. So as stated, there were no signatories on the sign-in sheet, so we will move on from public, our public meeting to, or I'm sorry, our public comment to our pending ordinance, which is item A, ordinance number 23-55, to exclude the city of Rolling Meadows as a municipal employer from coverage under the Paid Lee for All Workers Act, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the first. And Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of this ordinance? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to item B, ordinance number 23-56, to amend the city code in order to reduce the number of video gaming accessory GA licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows, 1480 Golf Corp. Doing Business as Bulldog Ale House at 1480 Golf Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Mikail for the first.
Second.
And thank you Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to item C, ordinance number 23-57, to amend the city code in order to reduce the number of Class A2 liquor licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows, Giant Sakura Incorporated Doing Business as Giant Sakura at 411 Elgonquin Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And Aldrin Mikail for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item D, ordinance number 23-58, to amend the city code in order to reduce the number of Class A2 liquor licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows, RM 3G Group LLC Doing Business as Melts Bar and Grill at 1655 West Elgonquin Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Boucher for the first.
Second.
And thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item E, ordinance number 23-59, to amend the city code in order to reduce the number of Class B1 liquor licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows, Kirchhoff Gas and Food Mart Incorporated at 4200 Kirchhoff Road, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Mikail for the first and Aldrin Bud Matts for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item G, ordinance number 23-61, to amend the city code of the city of Rolling Meadows with respect to the time and place of regular meetings. Oh. Which one are we on? We're on F. We almost skipped F. Thanks for keeping me honest, everyone. Item F, ordinance number 23-60, to amend the city code to establish the Office of Ex officio Director of the Board of Directors of the Rolling Meadows Public Library, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Beniziano for the first.
Second.
And Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item G, ordinance number 23-61, to amend the city code of the city of Rolling Meadows with respect to the time and place of regular meetings of the city council, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Mikail for the first and Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item H, ordinance number 23-62, to approve a property tax levy for the city of Rolling Meadows, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the first and Aldrin Boucher for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item I, ordinance number 23-63, to approve a property tax levy for the city of Rolling Meadows Library. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Mikail for the first.
Second.
And Aldrin Beniziano for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item J, ordinance number 23-64, to approve a property tax levy abatement, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And Aldrin Mikail for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item K, ordinance number 23-65, to revise the fiscal year 2023 annual budget for the city of Rolling Meadows, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Mikail for the first and Aldrin Bud Matts for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item L, ordinance number 23-66, to adopt the fiscal year 2024 annual budget, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Beniziano for the first and Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item A, I'm sorry, item M, ordinance number 23-67, to approve a city of Rolling Meadows five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2024 through fiscal year 2028, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Yes, thank you Aldrin Kohler for the first.
Second.
And thank you Aldrin Reyes for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item N, ordinance number 23-68, to amend the Rolling Meadows city code, Appendix B, Schedule of Rates, Fines, and Penalties, Chapter 23 Utilities Related to Sewer Rates, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Reyes for the first and Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item O, ordinance number twenty-three dash sixty-nine, to amend the Rolling Meadows City Code. Appendix B, Schedule of Rates, Fines, and Penalties, Chapter Twenty-three Utilities Related to Stormwater Management Fees. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin McHale for the first.
Second.
And Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item P, ordinance number twenty-three dash seventy, amend the Rolling Meadows City Code. Appendix B, Schedule of Rates, Fines, and Penalties, Chapter Ten, Garbage Fees, Rates, and Fines. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin McHale for the first.
Second.
And Aldrin Boucher for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item Q, ordinance number twenty-three dash seventy-one, to amend Rolling Meadows City Code. Appendix B, Schedule of Rates, Fines, and Penalties, Chapter Thirteen Utilities Related to Water Rates. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Reyes for the first.
Second.
And thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item R, ordinance number twenty-three dash seventy-two, to enact a temporary development moratorium upon certain building zoning and subdivision applications within the Kirchhoff Road Corridor District. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Veneziano for the first and Aldrin McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Aldrin Kohler.
So I've already discussed this with some of the city staff, but I want to have this tied somewhat, at least in the intention, tie this to the update to the city's land use plan. Because we're putting a twelve-month stay to the owners of this land here, and that's understood why we're doing it. We're trying to make it, get it in line with our comprehensive plan, but that puts the owners of the land kind of at a standstill. And I know is in some of the discussions that's in the packet, there's some concerns about that by at least two of the people on that, on that corridor there. And it's all tied to our comprehensive plan, which is, what are we going to do with Kirchhoff Corridor? But we don't have a plan. So my concern is that we're going to get through the twelve months and still be at no plan, waiting for another moratorium. So in my discussion with the staff, I asked that we have in the twenty-twenty-four schedule a plan for land use of Kirchhoff Corridor completed within a timeframe to be determined, I guess.
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to speak to that, Aldrin Kohler. So we are planning to undertake a comprehensive subarea planning effort that covers the Kirchhoff Road Corridor with that exact intent, which is to complete that effort within twenty-twenty-four in the time that this moratorium is in place and to complete the zoning, any, any proposed zoning changes that ultimately come out of that effort by the time that the moratorium is lifted. And if we are completed with all of that work sooner than twelve months, we can choose to lift that moratorium at such a time that we do complete that comprehensive planning work.
And timing on that plan?
Uh, should be done within twenty-twenty-four. Our intent is to aim for RFP release shortly after, well, within the next week or so. And then from there, select a vendor, and it's about a six to eight month endeavor. I'm looking at our community development director.
That's correct, and certainly our RFP will emphasize the need for urgency.
Thank you.
Thank you Aldrin Kohler. Any additional discussion? Okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item S, ordinance number twenty-three dash seventy-three, to modify the city's zoning ordinance to reclassify personal services as a permitted use within the C three district. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Aldrin Boucher? Aldrin Boucher for the first and Aldrin O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item T, ordinance number twenty-three dash seventy-four, to modify the city's zoning ordinance concerning lot and building coverage. In for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin McHale for the first and Aldrin Veneziano for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. We have now arrived at our consent ordinances this evening. The next item includes three items, items U through W. Does any older person wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares in order for one motion to consider the three ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Veneziano for the first and Aldrin Budmats for the second. Item U, ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero, to amend the alcoholic liquor code to increase the number of licenses permitted under the Class A one liquor license. Cafe on the Grove LLC located at twenty-one sixty Plum Grove Road. In for first reading. Item V, ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero, to adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four compensation plan for certain employees of the city of Rolling Meadows, not subject to collective bargaining. In for first reading. And item W, ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero, to update the city's solid waste regulations and commence a study of commercial recycling. In for first reading. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. Onto new business, we have item X, which is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Reyes for the first.
Second.
And Aldrin McHale for the second. Is there any discussion regarding of the bills, regarding the payment of bills on warrant? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the warrant is approved. Moving on to our consent resolutions, we have eight items this evening, items Y through FF. Does any older person wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Yes, Aldrin Kohler.
I'd like to remove BB, CC, and DD.
BB, boy-boy, CC, cat-cat, DD, dog-dog.
Correct.
Okay. Any others? Yes, Aldrin Budmats.
FF.
And FF.
FF.
Okay. All right. Any others? Because anymore and it's no longer a consent agenda. Okay. So at this point, we now have one, two, three, four items remaining for our consent resolution. Is there a motion to approve those four resolutions in one motion without debate?
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Veneziano for the first.
Second.
And Aldrin O'Brien for the second. The remaining items on our consent resolutions are item Y, resolution number twenty-three dash R dash one thirty-two, to approve the retainment of closed session minutes and recordings. Item Z, resolution number twenty-three dash R dash one thirty-three, to acknowledge and accept the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Rolling Meadows Library budget. Item AA, resolution number twenty-three dash R dash one thirty-four, to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Schaumburg for the maintenance of the Hartung Road Bike Path and related facilities from Quentin Road to Old Plum Grove Road. And item EE, resolution number twenty-three dash R dash one thirty-eight, to approve the twenty-twenty-four City Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting Dates. The question is, shall the four resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those four resolutions are adopted, which, which brings us back to the top of the list for item BB, resolution number twenty-three dash R dash one thirty-five, to reject the proposal for the firearms range backstop and ceiling ballistic plate removal slash placement project for the city of Rolling Meadows, Illinois. Aldrin Kohler, you pulled this, so you have a first comment.
Yeah, my question, so my understanding is that we're rejecting the only proposal that was put in.
My apologies. I'm sorry. We need a motion first.
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Veneziano for the first.
Second.
And thank you Aldrin O'Brien for the second.
No.
Continue, please.
So my understanding is that we had one proposal submitted for this, and that is the only one we're considering. It was way beyond our budget. My understanding is that it's beyond our budget and may not address our needs. The question is, is how do we fix this? And are we going out for another proposal, our bidding process? Or we have another solution? I suppose this could be addressed either by our city manager or the police chief.
Thank you Alderman for the question. Hopefully I could address that. We are looking at other alternatives to upgrade the range. We've been sort of doing this project for several years. The first thing we did was upgrade the ventilation system. Like I said, we only received one proposal came in and about fifty percent over what our expected cost is. So we are going to be looking at some other alternatives, and we're already doing that, being more cost effective.
Is it safe?
Yes, it will be safe. Obviously.
It's currently safe?
It is currently safe, yes. And the reason that we were looking at doing the upgrades is making it more conducive to certain type of training. And the range is still in full use, and like I said, looking at some other alternatives, I think we could accomplish what we were looking at during this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments regarding this item? Okay. Then the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this resolution is adopted. Moving on to item CC, resolution number twenty-three dash R dash one thirty-six, to authorize the purchase of human services case management software. Need a motion and a second before we can continue with our comments.
So moved.
Thank you Aldrin Veneziano for the first and Aldrin McHale for the second. Again, Aldrin Kohler, since you pulled this item, you have first comment.
Yeah, so this, this comment just needs some questions answered, which have a whole list. But the proposal currently has only one aspect of human services within it specifically targeting violent survival. And yet we're talking about a much bigger plan. How do we get those other parts into this plan? Is it going to cost us more in twenty-twenty-four to add those other components, or is this something we're cheering in years ahead?
So to make sure I understand the question correctly, is, is the question, the type of data that is going into the system compared to the entire department? So the, the new department that's being created, the, the system that we're established, the system that we're procuring here is intended to capture information about casework. One of the largest parts of what we do in social services in our newly created human services department is responding to various different types of casework. That case information needs to be handled in a way that's HIPAA compliant, because a lot of it is medical related, as well as in our current software. So for example, in our Tyler ERP, there isn't a module within it that can handle this type of information, which is why we've gone out to acquire the proposed software package. As it pertains to a broader collection of information, that those interactions that exist beyond what we are doing with our, our casework and victims' assistance, we certainly can put together a repository and come up with a mechanism by which we collect that data. Our intention is for anything in the future that we bring to the council to be supported by data. I know that there's a desire to evaluate and establish a strategic plan for this department and establish a long-term vision. A lot of that will be based on the data and information that we collect. And so at the moment, with respect to the, the human services case management software, this is intended to be able to best manage the information that we are pulling based on much information similar to the way that a doctor's office maintains electronic records of individuals that are patients.
So I guess my question comes back to, you know, there's, there is two parts of this proposal that I saw. One part is the general software, and the second part is specifically for violent survival's reporting. Okay. And that's because we have a grant that we're trying to do that, and so they put in that second part, which isn't that much more. But my question arises from, on the software itself, as to other parts that allow us to report, like we're reporting the survival, violent survivors, survival plan to the federal government. Is that a federal grant?
Correct, yeah, it's the voca grant.
So we have a system to report to the federal government. We have a system that's going to manage our cases within here. I'm looking for something that helps us justify to our residents our human services. Because I believe this is a program that's eventually going to expand as we see more cases of different types beside the violence survival plan, other types of human services. But we need to be able to have that data reported back so we can report it to our residents who are paying for the service. It's a, it's a good plan. I just went looking for what else do we have to add on to this to get those reports so that we can be stewards of this for our residents.
I'm, I'm going to invite social services manager Natalia Neves, who's with us this evening, to comment on this. She was.
I didn't see you down there, Natalia.
Yeah, she, she was heavily involved in the procurement process and went through the different software options and packages that exist out there for human services department. So, Dr. Neves?
Thank you, Aldrin Kohler, for this question. I am very excited to talk about this software, because what, when we put together this council action summary, perhaps I missed explaining what we're really asking the software to do. This software, I'll be able to customize exactly what I want it to capture. So I do want it to capture everything we do. We'll be doing senior services and outreach programs and our robust police social work program that already exists and victim services. So this program will actually let us capture everything that we're doing and what we want to do, as well as demographic information of the users. And anything that we capture, we can report in an anonymous manner. So that's, that's the most exciting part, to actually say what, see what the data shows about the needs, the trends of use, and the services that are being offered.
Yeah, so I just want to make clear that I'm a strong supporter of our human services. Yeah, so I just want to make clear that I'm a strong supporter of our human services. I want to be a strong supporter of our human services program that we're trying to expand in the city. But you have to help us answer back to our citizens. I like the software because I think the comment in the thing was data informs practices. I think data informs our residents too, as to why we're doing this. And so whatever we do, if we need more pieces on here that help us get that reporting back, not to the federal government, but to our residents, let's put that in there too. So data is going to keep our citizens informed as to the need, the reason we're doing this. And so whatever we need to get that back to our residents, let's make sure we get that. Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Veneziano.
Thank you. So I just want to add that off of Alderman Kohler is that this is very much like an EMR system that we're all very relatively familiar with, with like our physician's office or when you go to a hospital. And that I want residents to understand that as we collect this data, it is, the data can be shared, like Dr. Neves said, anonymously. However, we use that data for changing our best practices and, and what changes we may need to have or add services. But in no means does that mean that we are going to share that data. It is very much like you go to your physician's office. They are not going to share your data with, you know, the next patient coming in. And that is something that we need to be compliant with, within the state, to have those HIPAA compliant measures taken, as Dr. Neves can, can speak to, that we, we have very sensitive information that we deal with, and we want to make sure that those residents that we are servicing, that we are protecting their rights. And so obviously, I'm in full support of this software, that without this data, case managing in itself is very, a very difficult process to do without having data at your fingertips. So the fact that we can customize it for what we're getting is, is amazing. So good job in, in doing a lot of research. I know that's very difficult to do. So I want residents to understand that as our human services department expands, there is going to be needs that we can't physically show residents, and this is going to be one of them. However, it is a tremendous asset and a tool that they need, just like cell phones, like computers, wifi, those kind of things.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. And that is also an important item that we want to also bring up, which is that because there was research, specific research done to find this particular software service and the cost associated with that, I actually do want to have a motion to amend resolution number 23-r-136 to waive the bidding requirements as stated. So I will need a first and a second to bring that motion forward. Thank you, Alderman Kohler for the first.
Second.
Alderman Veneziano for the second. And then Attorney Wolf, was there anything else you wanted to add regarding that motion before we?
That's appropriate, there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that said, is there any discussion regarding the motion to waive the bidding requirements? Okay, seeing none, then can the clerk please call the roll regarding the motion to amend the resolution?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolution is, is amended to waive the bidding requirements. And that brings us back then to item CC. Yes, Alderman Boucher?
Just a quick question. Who is responsible for if some, the system goes down? So did we prepay for hours to fix it? Are we taking care of that in-house? Like, who's going to be the person in case there's an issue?
I can answer that question. This is actually a subscription base, so it's going to be listed in the cloud, but IT, in-house IT support, will be able to administer and maintain that revolting for the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this resolution? Or comments? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This brings us to item DD, resolution number 23-r-137, to approve a professional services agreement with Selbert Perkins Design Comprehensive Brand and Visual Identity Development. Is there a motion to consider this resolution? So moved. Thank you, Alderman Veneziano for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Alderman Kohler, since you pulled this, you have first comment.
Yeah, so I want to just state that I'm in favor of the resolution. I just had a few questions on it. What is, when do we anticipate the start of, if we, if we approve this, when would they start? And the reason I'm asking this question is, this is another one of our strategic planning things, which is in the comprehensive plan concept of who are we? Who is Rolling Meadows? What's our identity? Also ties back to that Kirchhoff corridor, Kirchhoff Road corridor planning as to what we want to be going forward. So are we melding all this together time-wise so that sometime in 2024, we can have this package, all the Kirchhoff corridor, the branding, the labeling, the wayfinding, all that? Because we can't do that until we have the Kirchhoff corridor planned together, correct? Do you agree?
Sure, yes. So if I'm understanding your question, Alderman, and it's, it's the right one, the, a couple of questions, but the, the contractor consultant for this is ready to go. We only need to negotiate an agreement with them, but I anticipate that'll be done relatively soon with the holidays. They'd be ready to start as early as January, and I expect they'd start at some point in January. As we look at our sub-area planning, with how those schedules will overlap, they'll be starting likely a bit later, but there will be opportunity to coordinate at least on a couple of the in-person meetings that Selbert Perkins has planned and that the sub-area planning will incorporate. Certainly, to your point, Alderman, we'd want both of those done before we continue onward to look at future projects like wayfinding in the corridor.
If I can add one quick comment to that. Selbert Perkins, the recommended contractor, has experience with wayfinding types of, of design work. They specifically, most recently, did work with the village of Skokie on their downtown master planning and some of the imagery related to that. And one of the competitive advantages that they brought to the table is that opportunity to find a harmonious relationship between the branding, given that they're experienced in the brand and the placemaking, the wayfinding, as well as the comprehensive planning firm that we ultimately work with, so that we do create a cohesive product at the end that , that packages together the brand, the comprehensive plan and zoning land use components. That was something that we did, the review team did note in our review of the different vendors who responded to our RFP.
Okay, so also, I want to just point out, Assistant Manager Cole, that the capital projects plan for 2024, I believe, has in it some, a budget for some wayfinding, mainly the marquise at the entrances to the city. Am I correct? Monument signs or something?
That is correct. We have $25,000 in 2024 for.
Okay, so this, I'm trying to fit this all together so that we're not spending money on monument signs that we're going to change later because we got a new brand. So we got to work this all together as to one comprehensive plan. It all comes together hopefully by mid-year. Does that make sense?
It does, and that is our intent.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, we are. So while it's in the budget, if ultimately the timing of the brand finalization and the timing of the marquee sign procurement overlap, funds that remain unspent in 2024 remain in the fund balance. And then through the budgeting process, we can incorporate that into 2025 if there is an overlap into the following year for the time for fabrication and installation of that new marquee sign incorporating the new, the new brand.
Okay, so just so, in the capital plan, we hold back any spending until we get these done. That's all, trying to get it all synchronized. Makes sense?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
In addition, Alderman Kohler, you know, city staff and I have been working with only Department of Transportation to ensure that any new branding is also incorporated into improvements along the Euclid Bridge. So, which is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity because these bridges, you don't always get that opportunity to be able to adjust. And so there is also an incentive working with other government agencies to make sure that our branding is, is done right, because otherwise, we'll have to look at it every time we're going north and south on Route 53.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course. Any other questions or comments regarding this resolution? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. Lastly, item FF, resolution number 23-r-139, to adopt the Cook County United Against Hate Resolution. I need a first and a second? So, thank you, Alderman Veneziano for the first and Alderman Boucher for the second. Alderman Budmats, you pulled this, so you get first comment.
All right, thank you. I just pulled this simply so that we could separate it out and it didn't get lumped in because it seems too important to just lump it in with 10 other resolutions. So I wanted to vote on it individually, seeing how important it is.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats, for your consideration. Any other questions or comments regarding this resolution? Okay, seeing none, then the question is, shall the resolution to adopt the Cook County United Against Hate program be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
Mikail?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This now brings us to other business and reports. There are no mayoral appointments or proclamations or city clerk's report, which brings us to our city staff reports. And for community items of interest, I'll defer to City Manager Rob Savo.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The 2023 U.S. Marine Corps Toys for Tots collection is underway and runs through December 15th. New unwrapped toys are donated to local families in need and can be dropped off at Rolling Meadows City Hall, 3600 Kirchhoff Road, and at the Rolling Meadows Public Library at 3110 Martin Lane. The city's annual holiday celebration will be held this Thursday, November 30th, at 6:00 PM. Ring in the seasonal spirit with festive songs, Santa Claus, horse-drawn wagon rides, hot cocoa goodies, and the lighting of the city's holiday tree. The event will be held on the property of the city's historical museum at 3100 Central Road, which will be open for visitors to enjoy tokens of the city's past along with festive retro decor. The Rolling Meadows Police Department will be holding their annual holiday food drive on Saturday, December 9th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Rolling Meadows Jewel Osko parking lot on Kirchhoff Road. Help them fill the humvee to benefit the Palatine Township Food Pantry. For a list of requested donations or for more information, visit citirm.org or the